Are we good to go?
If your mics are on.
Okay. Okay, good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, May 4, 2021, Urbainville City Council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to begin roll call, please.
Carberry Montgomery.
Here.
Caduce.
Here.
Obrecht.
Here.
Poggi.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Urbainville is a national leader in character counts endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Item two is to approve the agendas, our motion, second, please. Motion by Poggi, second by Caduce, discussion, please vote. Alright, thank you, that passes. Alright, we do have a number of special, very special presentations tonight, and first is to the Minister of the Office, Officer Michael Mordini, and to introduce this, I'm gonna ask Sergeant Chad Underwood and Chief Johansson to come up, as well as Officer Mordini.
Good afternoon, council members, mayor. Thank you for letting me the opportunity to introduce one of our newest officers, Michael Mordini. Michael Mordini was raised in Polk City, Iowa, and graduated from North Polk High School in May of 2017. After high school, Officer Mordini attended Alexandria Technical Community College and received his Associate of Science degree in law enforcement in May of 2019. Officer Mordini received his Police Officer Certification in the state of Minnesota in June of 2019, and is working through the process to transfer his Police Officer Certification to the state of Iowa. I present to you Officer Michael Mordini.
Your right hand, please.
I, Michael Mordini.
I, Michael Mordini.
With the city of Urbainville.
With the city of Urbainville.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of the office of police officer.
Of the city of Urbainville, Iowa.
Of the city of Urbainville, Iowa.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Michael, do you have family?
My dad and my brother.
You wanna introduce?
Sure. Um, my dad there is from the day of the day of the war, over twenty years. And I've got my brother there, probably just in the public right now.
Mike, on behalf of the city council, we want to welcome you to the Urbainville. For today in Urbainville and our police department, thank you for keeping our residents safe. And to your family, we want to pledge to you, we will keep them safe as well. So thank you for sharing them with us, and we will keep them safe. So, Michael, welcome aboard, we appreciate you being here. Thanks.
Let's give another round of applause. Yes, I'm gonna read that next, yep. That's right. No, I don't want you to go away. It's very, very fitting that we have a proclamation or have a swearing in on Police Week, so I wanna read the proclamation. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. Furthermore, established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 22,600 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty protecting their communities, including Urbainville Police Officer Justin Martin. Whereas it's important that all residents know and understand the difficulties, the duties, and responsibilities of their police department. And whereas members of the Urbainville Police Department recognize their duty to serve the residents of Urbainville by safeguarding life and property by protecting all persons against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now therefore, I, Robert Nandwig, Mayor of the city of Urbainville, call upon all residents and organizations of Urbainville to observe the week of May 9, 2021 as National Police Week, the ceremonies in which all of our residents may join in commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. I further call on all residents of Urbainville to observe Saturday, May 15, 2021 as Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting their communities. I'd like to present this to Chief Johansson.
Appreciate that. Yep. This year, we are going to remain virtual with our recognition of Police Week. We'll be pushing some stuff out on our social media. And then the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial is also going virtual this week, or the week of Police Week, and pushing out a candlelight vigil virtually. They have pushed their actual in-person services to October in hopes that the pandemic will be at a point that they will be able to celebrate actually in person in Washington, DC. So we're hopeful that'll happen in October. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thanks for your support for the police department, we very much appreciate it. Always making a point to go up to Rockwell City during Police Week, so I have that trip planned for Friday of that week to go up and meet with the Martins and visit Justin, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. Alright. Our next proclamation is for Public Works Week 2021. Whereas public works professionals focus on the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health and high quality of life of the residents and businesses Urbainville suspect, Urbainville expect. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are the engineers, managers, employees at all levels of the government, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, and treatment in solid waste systems and public buildings. Whereas 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, which since 1960 has energized and educated the public on the importance of public works in their daily lives. National Public Works Week is a week to inquire, learn, and appreciate Urbainville's public work professionals who plan, build, manage, and maintain the city's 207 miles of streets, 222 miles of sanitary sewer and wastewater system, and collect 250 tons of garbage each week, and who will oversee the construction of $22.6 million in public infrastructure in 2021. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Robert Nandwig, Mayor of the city of Urbainville, on behalf of the Urbainville City Council, do hereby designate the week of May 16 through 2021 as National Public Works Week. And who are we gonna have accept this on behalf of the, I think Shane and John, are you guys here? Shane Houston and John? Alright. Can I get a picture for you? Alright, thanks, I appreciate it. I don't remember about that skinny though. Alright. And we have Public Safety Month, or excuse me, Building Safety Month. Whereas the city of Urbainville recognizes that its growth and sustainability depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our residents and our businesses. And whereas confidence in our community's buildings is achieved through the devotion of the building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of our buildings. And whereas these professionals are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a US-based nonprofit organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality building codes. These international codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the world, allow our community and the nation to benefit economically and technologically. And whereas the theme for the Building Safety Month 2021 is Prevent, Prepare, Protect, Building Code Save, encouraging all Urbainville residents and businesses to become aware of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, water safety, training the next generation, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas each year in observance of the Building Safety Month, the Urbainville City Council acknowledges the essential services provided to us by all local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. And so now therefore I, Robert Nandwig, Mayor of the city of Urbainville, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month. And I know Roger Schimmel, our building inspector, is here, Roger, I'm gonna present this to you. Thank you, Roger. Anything else you wanna add on that?
Sure, for those that are wondering why it's a month for building safety, week one is energy and innovation, week two is training the next generation, week three is water safety, and week four disaster preparedness. You go to the Citizen Serve online portal we have, the front page is linked to it, you go straight to the ICC website. They want more information on it. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, Roger. Okay, that is the end of our presentations for now, until we get to the Fourth of July committee. Then we'll have one more. This time, we'll go into citizens forum, this is the opportunity to address the council on something that's not a part of tonight's regular agenda, and we'll open it up online. If there's anyone that would like to address the council that's participating online, you can unmute yourself and recognize yourself. If you're on the phone, you can hit star six to unmute yourself. Hearing none, we will move on. Item five is to approve the amendments from the April 20, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Obrecht.
Second.
Second by Russell, discussion, please vote. Okay, that passes. Alright, thank you. Item six is the consent agenda, we have eight items for approval.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Poggi, discussion, please vote. That passes. And as part of that, we have the approval of the Fourth of July funding. I know we have some members from the Fourth of July Committee tonight that would like to come up, Ray Main, Raquel, and Tim, do you wanna come up and? Ray, you're gonna start us off?
I am.
Alright.
Mayor, Urbainville City Council member, my name is Ray Main, and I represent the Urbainville Fourth of July Celebration. And with me, I'm proud to introduce you to my co-representative, Raquel Ball, she helps us on the sponsorship committee, and last but not least, our president, Mr. Tim Mueller, who has led this committee for two years and developed some really wonderful projects for the Fourth of July Celebration. You know, if it wasn't for you, I don't think we could get this done. You have been loyal to us for years in supporting us and your community, and brings thousands of people into Urbainville on the Fourth of July, and they have a great time. And with your help, we've been able to put together a wonderful parade, celebration of your tent now and then, but most importantly, we have put together some beautiful, beautiful fireworks. And that's really all because of you and your efforts, so, thank you, committee member, thank you. I don't know that you hear a lot of thank yous from your community, so I wanted to be one of the first ones to be able to do that, and I would like to give you a plaque, it's probably too small, but it's all that we cut for. If you would, please, please accept this plaque as a thank you, or thank you gift.
Alright.
Take this from me?
That's right, we'd very good picture, right?
Great. It's all yours, bud.
Alright.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you.
Alright.
I did smile, by the way.
Okay, I smiled behind you. Well, thank you to the Fourth of July, let me get back to the mic here, before you leave. On the half of the council, I wanna thank the Fourth of July Committee, because this is truly a joint labor of love, I mean, the Fourth of July Committee is an all-volunteer committee, and you guys do a wonderful job, you're in and you're out, so, thank you for all the work at the Fourth of July Committee, because it's truly a lot of work, so, yes, we can, it's our privilege to help participate, but Urbainville is truly unique in the Fourth of July celebration that we have, so, thank you for all you do to make our community look so good as well.
You know, there's some new members here, do you have any buttons you can sell here now? We got a crew up here that'll be happy to buy.
It's been a bit delayed.
So you're gonna come back with the buttons then at a later time? Alright, you got the number one button? Yeah, yup, alright. No, no.
Paying, I'll pay double, so.
No, just so you know, I'm collecting all the ones during my tenure, and then I'll donate them to the historical society.
I even took $5 from my daughter before I left, in preparation.
Alright, thank you guys, appreciate it. Alright, moving on then to item seven is our public hearings. First is item 7.1 is the public hearing to consider the Bentley Ridge Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan and Rezoning from A1 Agricultural Reserve District to the PUD Planned Unit Development District at 170th Street and Plum Drive. The public notice was published in the Des Moines Register on April 23, 2021. Ask them, there are objections to that notice as published.
There were none.
Ask for a motion, the second opened the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery.
I'll second it.
Second by Caduce, discussion, please vote. Alright, and to introduce this is our Community Development Director, Steve Franklin, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council, let's share a screen here so I can show you where we're talking about. Okay, so this is a request from Kevin Johnson with Accurate Land Company to rezone the entirety of this area, it's a large property, about 213 acres. This is 170th Street here on the right side of the screen. This is the existing Radiant Elementary School, that you can see the building underneath these calls here, there's the water tower, and then a mile to the west, this is 184th Street, which is our current corporate limits. So it's all of this property in between 170th and 184th. The request is for a multi-use PUD. This is compliant with our current comp plan, we've kinda always known that this was coming, just been waiting for the right time to get a lot of the, the Bentley Ridge name comes from the tree farm that was up here at the corner, they've got a lot of that, most of that relocated out now to the new store in Grimes. So we're just kinda waiting for when they would be ready to rezone it, but with the school now being there and the demand for houses close to the school, they've determined that this is the point to be able to do it. So, as I mentioned, it's a mixed-use PUD. Parcel A, which is up here in the corner, is about 11 acres of commercial development. There is also existing commercial development here immediately to the east, that's part of that Highland Meadows PUD, and we do anticipate at some point in the future on the north, there will also be commercial development, so we can have one of those commercial nodes every, all two miles apart, as the comp plan currently calls for. So parcel A is commercial. Parcel B, which is directly to the south, is the parcel between the commercial development and the school, and that's about, what is that? It's about 17 acres, and that is owned to either be multifamily residential or some small lot residential homes. There is parcel C up here immediately west of the commercial, which is to be townhomes. And then most of the property, the remaining property, about 170 acres of the 213 is for single-family residential development. Parcel D, which is this piece closest to the school, the lots would have a minimum width of 60 feet, and then the remainder of the property, as you go to the west, the lots would have a minimum width of 70 feet. The townhomes, if those get built, would be our typical eight units per acre. And the multifamily, should somebody want to build apartments, would be the maximum density of 20 units per acre, which the code currently allows as well. Planning and zoning commission does recommend approval subject to the PUD master plan, I got you a copy of that too, be happy to answer questions.
Steve, when we talked this morning on the phone, you had indicated you were gonna look up about how many units this would hold.
We saw, we've discussed a conceptual plan with them, they will be submitting formally a preliminary plat at some point, which will show us exactly, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of like 220, 240 single-family lots, is what would be included. And then depending on what kind of density they wanna go with, with the apartments at 20 units per acre, on 17 units per acre, you know, you're in the neighborhood of 320, 340 there. And then the townhomes, again, depends on whether they're gonna be developed as townhomes or not, but right now, this particular parcel, which is about six and a half acres, at eight units per acre, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 something townhomes. So, and again, when that preliminary plat comes in, they need to do a preliminary plat for the entire property, we'll know exactly how many lots we're looking at, but it obviously will take years to go through this size of property, probably with the stuff closest to the school developing first, and then it will probably go to the west.
Thank you.
I just had a question in general on the comp plan on this of, since we haven't updated our comp plan in a while, if we had it more updated, would there be any changes to this in your mind?
I honestly don't think there would be, you know, we still want those commercial nodes. One of the things we'll discuss is, do we wanna change our current two-mile spacing on that? But the fact that we've already got a commercial, and I think it's, I'm trying, I meant to look, and I forgot what, how much commercial area is in this PUD immediately to the east. I think it's close to about the same nine or 10 acres, which I think is about right. The main thing that's different here that we might have expected, say 15 years ago, is that all of those single-family residential lots would have been like 75, 80 feet or bigger. And now we're responding to the market where we've got some 60 footers in here, and then some, maybe some additional townhomes and apartments from what we would originally required. But I honestly don't think that it would change much.
Okay, I just, I don't know enough about the properties around it, it just looked like a light amount of commercial compared to the amount of residential, so.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't know if the comp plan would have changed the commercial residential mix at all or not, so.
I honestly don't think it would have.
Alright. We are in public hearing on this item, is anyone online that would like to address the council on this item? If you are, please, again, unmute yourself and recognize yourself. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Caduce.
Second.
Second by Obrecht, discussion, please vote. Alright, that passes. We have two items for consideration.
I move the amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, motion by Poggi.
Second.
Second by Caduce, discussion, please vote.
And I move the first reading of ordinance 2021-09.
Motion by Poggi.
Second.
Second by Obrecht, discussion, please vote. Alright, that passes. Alright, thank you, item, moving on to item 7.2 is a public hearing in the consideration of bids for the 2021 sanitary sewer lining program. The public notice for this was published in the April 16, 2021. Des Moines Register, any objections to that notice as published?
There were none.
Ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Obrecht, discussion, please vote. Who's ahead of me? Alright, that passes. And to introduce this is our Director of Public Works at Engineering, John Larson, John.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, this is our 2021 sanitary sewer lining program bid tabulation. It was April 28th, we received five bids on the project. The little bid was from an municipal bike tool company in the amount of $283,000, $287.55. That was actually 7,000, roughly 7,500, or 2.6% more than our engineer's estimate of just under 276,000. With the project, we'll be lining 11,000 feet of sanitary sewer. There'll be 7,100 feet in Urbainville and 3,900 feet in Windsor Heights. It should be noted with this project, that'll be entirely funded by the Urbainville Sanitary Sewer District and the Urbainville Windsor Heights Sanitary District, and we hope to have everything completed by the end of this year. I'm just gonna show you where.
Oops, sorry about that, I didn't notice it wasn't on. Just to show you where, where we're at, here on the, on the map is 86th Street, here's Meredith Drive, so we're predominantly south and east of the intersection of Meredith and 86th Street. Then just kinda a little bit about what we're doing, is basically, they put in a flexible liner inside the pipe, they heat it up till it becomes rigid, and that helps seal off the pipe from any roots or anything that have been coming in, and then they go in and they cut out the surfaces where the houses connect. And again, it's a, it's a real cost-effective way to repair pipes without having to dig anything up or really, really disrupt the neighborhood. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you, John, any questions for John on this item? Alright, we are in public hearing on this item, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion, the second to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery. Second by Poggi, discussion, please vote. That item passes, and then we have three items for approval, for consideration.
Move Resolution 131-2021.
Motion by Obrecht.
Second.
Second by Caduce, discussion, please vote. That passes.
Move Resolution 132-2021.
Okay, motion by Obrecht.
Second.
Second by Caduce, discussion, please vote. That passes.
And move Resolution 133-2021.
Second.
Motion by Obrecht, second by Caduce. Discussion, please vote. And that passes. All right, thank you. Item 7.3 is a public hearing, the consideration of bids for the City Hall HVAC renovation. The public notice for this was published in the April 16, 2021. Des Moines Register, any objections to that? Notice is published.
There were none.
As for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Obrecht.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote. All right, thank you. And introduce this, I'll turn it over to Kevin James. Kevin?
Okay, I gotta... Did I do it wrong? Been over a year since I've been up here.
Special, uh, the hall would be right now.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present the, the bids for the City Hall HVAC renovation project. We have the bids of, the low bid being Baker Group for 4,000, or $468,562. The low bid of Baker Group is $48,562,000, or 11.5% more than the engineer's estimate of $420,000. Feel the cost increase can be attributed to an increased construction material costs and COVID-related delays. It is anticipated that this work would be completed by November 1 of this year. Project will provide for rooftop unit replacement, the addition of terminal airboxes, ductwork modifications, electrical modifications and associated controls. The terminal airboxes will provide for increased temperature control, reduced compressor wear, and additional dehumidification. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Will it make that noise go away?
This is a different deal. It's the Liebert unit for, or the air conditioning unit for the server room. So we're working on bids for that as well.
That's all, that's all I want.
And we're hoping to get all...
I'm sure for you guys that are here all day, every day, though, you want this, so.
We're hoping to get the space heaters out of AJ's office.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I was, I was gonna say that, just so we can keep AJ warm in the winter time.
Kevin, is this original? It's been replaced?
The...
HVAC.
We did a renovation back in '15 at one of the rooftops, but the other, what, six?
The last six.
Yeah.
And so, is this pretty expected, is this normal after '15, '16?
Rooftops don't allow, if I understand what Dick was, had said, was that they don't allow for the dehumidification part of it, as well as the new rooftop units were.
And life expectancy on these now will be another?
The new ones will be 15 to 20 years old.
Okay.
These are, these end of their life.
Good, good.
All right. Any further questions from the council? We are in public hearing on this item. Again, I'll recognize anybody from the public that would like to address the council on this item. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion, a second to close the public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing on this item.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote. Okay, that passes, and we have three items for consideration here.
And move Resolution 142-2021.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Obrecht. Discussion, please vote.
And would move Resolution 143-2021.
The first one passed. I didn't see this. Okay. First item passed, the motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Obrecht on the second item. Discussion, please vote. That passes.
And Resolution 144-2021, approving the contract with Baker Group.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Obrecht. Discussion, please vote. And that passes. All right, that ends our public hearings. Move on to item 8, to establish public hearings versus item 8.1 is to establish the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment number one, and our finance director, Nikki Lamb. Would answer any questions if there are? I'll ask for a motion in a second.
I'll move Resolution 129-2021.
Okay, motion by Obrecht, or Caduce, excuse me. Motion by Caduce?
Second.
Second by Obrecht. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Item 9, regular agenda items versus item 9.1, the 2021 series A general obligation bond sale. Again, Nikki, would you answer any questions if there are? If not, there are two items for consideration.
Move Resolution 138-2021.
Motion by Obrecht.
Second.
Second by Caduce. Discussion, please vote. That passes.
And move Resolution 139-2021.
Okay, motion by Obrecht. Second by Caduce. Discussion, please vote.
Oh, sorry.
And that passes. All right, item 9.2 is consider the 2080 agreement amendment with the Urbendale Community School District, and to introduce this item is our Parks and Director, Jan Hurkey. Jan?
Good evening, members of the council. This is an update of the 2080 agreement, and essentially of, once the pool closed, we have had parking along the, for the pool on this area here, as well as on the other side. So this agreement, essentially, of when the, it went before the school board and they already approved it, so we're recommending that the 19 spots that had been designated for the pool go back to the school district. And also, as programming increases at the senior center, one of the biggest challenges we have is that of parking. So we are requesting, this is the, I'll show you what the, this had been what the parking was, existing when the pool is open, so these 19 spots are going back to the school district. This had been a row that, in the school property, that was allowed for parking by the senior center. So what is proposed tonight is, again, those 19 spots for the pool go back to the school district. We're requesting one additional line of parking spots, row of 13 spaces. So we'll be able to add parking during the day for the seniors. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Jan. Any questions for Jan?
Just kind of a general conversation on parking over there. At one time, we set aside parking, too, for Lions Park, for, I think it was Ucan, or?
It's for the, we did last year, we can, last year or the year before, of additional parking spots that are just designated for Ucan, as well as for the Lions Park patrons, as we have our Good Team Being preschool program and other programs during the day, and those parking spots were all used. And when a parent usually has a baby and other kids and so forth, so six of those spots, we added on that corner for the parking, for the Lions shelter during the day.
And since that's city park, that this doesn't affect that?
This doesn't affect anything. This is related to the 2080 agreement update, amendment for the parking spots that the school district owns and they are allocating for use by the city. In one of the, in 2014, when we initially made this a 2080 agreement, the challenge was because police department couldn't tow any of the cars because it wasn't a city policy or city ordinance. So now we can reference that. We certainly work with the school district and make sure the kids are informed of it, and when they're repeat offenders. And we have the school resource officer that, that, we give them a few chances, and then their chances are done. It's amazing when one or two cars get towed, how quickly that word spreads to the other students, so. But Tim Carver, it was, it was great, we, just a side note, of programming, as you know, started at the senior center. Again, we reopened a soft opening on Monday, and we had reminded this high school and Tim Carver, the, the principal there, that students can't park. They were parking in the actual senior center parking lot. He was out there personally reminding the students, so it was great. We've been in, in close communication with, with the high school, and, and when issues do come up, we certainly communicate those.
Because I take it that the actual line, the 44 spaces are Urbendale, city, and then the 13 spaces is school district?
Yep. The line is shown right here. So this is city property, this square, so all of this is school district property. So it's the 42 spots here, as well as the 10, and now the 13 right here. So all of these, that's what this is related to. So right here, these 11 are on city property, the rest are on school district property.
Oh, okay, so only 11 of those spots are actually city property of the 44. Okay.
And I guess my question would be on time. Is there kind of a time of day on the signs? Usually there are signs that says, no parking here for senior center. It's like night activities that happen at the school. That's, it's more open for that.
Right, I believe it's eight to four, I believe, is what's on the sign. Yes, there is. And what we will do, obviously, we're not going to put posts in the concrete here, so we'll have visual paint on those, on those, those 13 additional parking spots. These have signs by each one indicating senior center parking only during this time to this time, Monday through Friday.
And then, one thing they do in the parking lot, at least, is different paint colors, so using like a yellow versus white to designate it as senior versus high school. Is that part of the plan, or?
We haven't really talked about what color paint or what specifically will be on there, but that's certainly a good point of, of to catch their eyes. And I know, one of the issues, as well as when it snows, then they plead that they didn't know, or, or they had been parking along the fire lane here, the snow covers it. So it's an education process, but they, they typically respond reasonably well, once, once we work with the school.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is kind of a collateral matter, but I had a inquiry as to whether or not we were going to operate the splash pad this year.
Everything is, this will be a cleared site. Everything is taken out, which, by the way, asbestos has been removed. It was much less than we anticipated. We, and next council meeting, we'll come to you, request to go out to bids in public hearing for the demolition. And the boiler was removed yesterday. I think there was this much room on each side. Dick showed me pictures of them taking out the door, as they had to lift it out of the lower level base, and he made a comment. It was, the guy was standing there, it was literally, it squeaked through. So that is being stored right now at the park maintenance building at Walker Johnson, and it will be used at the library.
How do they come out in that fuel tank? Did that come out of the ground?
That will be all part of the demolition of the, of the pool.
So we don't really know the extent of the contamination at this point, until you get in there, start digging it out?
That we do. We do know that, we got that tested, and that was the 14,000 from Terricon, and it was well below DNR levels. So soil, as well as water, it, it wasn't a concern for residential or environmental, but they did recommend removing and taking that out. Obviously, when it returns back to the school, they don't want to deal with the tank underneath as well. So the report was good. They did say it should be removed. So that will be all part of this.
Remediation required?
There shouldn't be any remediation.
It was well below action levels, is what you said, right?
Yeah. Fuel oil, you can just, yeah, open it up.
All right. Thank you, Jan. Any further questions or comments?
I can move Resolution 115-2021.
Okay, motion by Caduce.
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Discussion, please vote.
Can I vote on an agreement that I signed the other side of?
You can now. You're not holding that office. You're holding this office now.
Declaring a conflict here?
Well, there's three signatures on the agreement. Only one person's still in that same seat.
All right, item 9.3 is to consider the engineering services agreement for Aurora Avenue, 104th Street, and Sutton Drive, and also 100th Street widening project. John, answer any questions if there are?
Move to approve Resolution 137-2021.
Motion by Obrecht.
Second.
Second by Poggi. Discussion, please vote. All right, that passes. Item 9.4 is to consider the crossing service installation agreements with the Iowa Interstate Railroad, and introduce this as, again, John Larson. Jan?
Okay, this is an agreement with the Iowa Interstate Railroad to do maintenance or replacement on the railroad crossings on 100th Street and Aurora Avenue. I'm just going to show you where they're at. Here's Douglas Avenue, 100th Street. So here is the crossing. It'll be replaced for the entire, entire length of the road. And our other one is, we had Northwest Urbendale Drive here on, on the right, 112, 109th on the left, and then Aurora Avenue through here. To recall, it was in 2017 that we reconstructed Aurora Avenue. The piece to the east of the railroad was in pretty good shape, so now the last thing to do is replace the area around the railroad tracks. So basically, the way it works is, the railroad prepares the cost estimates for us as part of the agreement. They're estimating the cost for 100th Street to be just over $165,000, and then they want Aurora Avenue just over $80,000, $85,000. The way the process works is, the city's responsible for installing the traffic control, and we also do the asphalt that helps you connect from the railroad tracks back to the existing pavement. Then the railroad completes the work of actually removing the tracks and, and replacing the tracks. And talking with the railroad, they're estimating each one of the projects will take five days to complete. So during that time, we'll need to fully close the, the road for that work and then provide a detour. The reason being is, you know, your tolerances are pretty tight on the railroad as far as grade and everything. And then talking with them, they said, if you try to do it in phases, all that does is take a lot longer and cost a whole lot more, because, again, you're, you actually pay their actual time for the crews to come in, stay, work, and all the materials and labor involved. So, again, we're looking at, at the five days. We're hoping maybe they can do it a little quicker. And also, the way they do it is, they've got crews that move around, so they're going to be in eastern Iowa, then they'll come and do one, I think, in Des Moines, and then they'll come to us next. So they're anticipating right now to be middle to the late, late August of this year, they'll be able to do that work. I guess with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So I imagine if we close 100th Street, that'll be quite disruptive to the businesses?
And again, it'll just be closed through traffic. The actual closure will be up at the railroad tracks.
Okay.
So you'll still be able to go to all the businesses, and we'll detour it on 104th Street. I don't want to really detour them onto Dennis Drive there. That's not really made for it, but I'm sure the locals will find that as a quick runaround. But again, you'll be able to use 100th Street to get all the businesses. It'll just be closed at the railroad. We'll just, if you want to get through and continue north of Douglas, you'll have to use 104th and come around.
Well, I hope you communicate in advance, when you figure out when the date is, to the, to all the businesses, so that they can notify.
We'll put up our, our message boards and stuff, so everybody sees that it will be getting closed.
And the Douglas Water Project, will it be done by then, do you think? Because we kind of have already a lot of construction just north of there on Douglas and that, so didn't know if any of that...
I think, I think the water project will be done. Our, our urbanization project will not be done yet, but.
Right. But to get over to 104th, it's right now, single lanes.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I would anticipate barring anything going wrong, they should... Yep. Yep. Yeah, I would anticipate barring anything going wrong, they should be done on that.
Well, we need to look at the crossing that's on Douglas.
That, that is something where it's also in the CIP. We are working with the railroad now. They're, we coming to town. They're going to look at what kind of timeline they think we should be doing with that and start to work up a cost for us.
So the railroad says they'll only shut it down for five days because?
That's, that's what they anticipate for it to be done. Correct. So we're hoping it's, it's four and then our bill also goes down, but we just got to wait and see.
But when we do look at the one on Douglas, there's a pond that likes to form near the, the water intake there.
Yep.
John, how much, how much use does that railroad line get?
It does not get a lot, but I think they still get enough that they're, they're not willing to, to close it yet.
Is it, last, my memory was, it was just a storage for cars. Do they, is there anybody on that that actively use or?
Biser lumber.
Number company has the ability and.
Still use it daily.
Yep.
Let's see. Adam, ask your parents how often they hear that horn at six o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. Well, that's what I was, I, I've seen cars go through there every once in a while, but I wasn't sure if it was, I knew it was mainly visor and some storage, but I wasn't sure if there was much else that gets.
The rail line terminates at visor.
Yeah.
But it's about a daily.
Yeah.
We were getting an email from somebody every morning. Yeah, he just wanted us to know that. Woke him up this morning.
Usually about six o'clock in the morning, five, three, six in the morning. Yeah.
He gave us a lot of credit. He wanted us to pass an ordinance. They couldn't honk the horn and overrule all those federal laws.
That's right.
All right. Great. Thank you.
All right. If there's anything further, we have four items for consideration.
Who wants a taco?
Move resolution 134 dash 2021.
Okay. Motion by Obrich.
Second.
Second by Russell. Discussion, please vote.
Move resolution 140 dash 2021.
Motion by Obrich.
Second as well.
Second by Russell. Discussion, please vote.
Move resolution 135 dash 2021.
Second.
Motion by Obrich. Second by Russell. Discussion, please vote.
And move for approval, resolution 141 dash 2021.
Second that resolution as well.
Motion by Obrich. Second by Russell. Discussion, please vote.
Another, just a parting question, John. So the city is responsible for maintaining the crossing.
Correct.
And we also are responsible to put up the, the lights, the control and the arm and that whole area.
It's basically their railroad and our street came along later. So yep, it's our responsibility. The good thing is, do you, since Douglas has a little more time, hopefully we can get some DOT funding to maybe help with that one.
Okay.
Okay. And all those items pass.
If you run into any problems with the railroad, AJ's an expert because he worked with them on the pallet company. So he's probably got, got him on speed dial.
That was actually John Conyer from our staff. He worked with them and it took, you know, closing 25 years. So I think we'll have to depend on some other method to get it working.
So when you tell me that it's only going to be closed for five days, I'm very optimistic.
All right. Moving on to item 9.5 is the equipment purchase for the rough train vehicles for parks and rec. And John, Kevin, answer any questions if there are.
Motion to approve council letter 6710.
Motion by Obrich.
Second.
Second by Pogi. Discussion, please vote.
And are you giving rides on these this summer?
Yeah. It's the same thing.
We could tour the, do the tour of our parks this summer.
The park with ATVs.
Forget the van. Let's get the open air caboose.
There we go. Yeah, there we go. Item 9.6 is to consider the purchase of the roadway salt for snow and ice control. John, do you have anything further to?
I can give just a quick update to you on that. So this is our annual purchase for, for salt. This year, fortunately, West Des Moines took the lead and they actually helped us solicit the salt for actually 24 cities and four different counties. Basically of that group though, there's seven of us that store in Grimes currently. Besides Urbandale, it'd be Clive, Grimes, Johnston, Pleasant Hill, Waukees and Windsor Heights. Des Moines and West Des Moines, since they built their own facilities, have moved out of Grimes. So that also fortunately kind of by default put us in charge of, of the salt storage up there. So, and we're overseeing, overseeing that. But basically of the allotment, we're buying 1,350 tons and that is how much we've used this past winter. So that'll bring us back up to capacity. And the cost of that is $80,082. So I guess with that, I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
I don't think you track that. Could we just go in and get a scoop and load the trucks?
Weigh it.
Okay. So it's by weight. And they keep track. Okay. Urbandale took this out, Waukees took this.
Keep track how, yeah, we keep track how much we've taken out. And then during each storm, we track how much we use. So we know how much we've used throughout, throughout the season.
And then our new salt storage facility, this doesn't cover any of that?
Our new.
170-ish.
Oh, when we build, build that, we'll have some additional storage out there. Correct.
Move to approve council letter 6709.
Second.
Motion by Obrich. Second by Caduce. Discussion, please vote.
$59 a ton for salt.
Okay. And that passes. That takes us to the end of our regular agenda. Mayor, uh, mayor and council items is back. Ron?
A couple of things. The, we issued, the mayor issued three proclamations today, which covers all, almost all of our employees. It reminds us how good our employees are and we should be appreciative of the fact they make us look good. So we should join in that carefully. The other one is just a question. AJ, Nicole sent out to us an email of a, from a citizen that was anonymous. And then I got it here in the, in my mail today. And I don't like anonymous complaints, but has that, have we checked up on some of the things? Some of them I can't even tell where they are, but.
I also got the letter and I'll be honest, I filed it appropriately because I don't respond to anonymous because they're hard to find. But I will, Nicole has a copy of it and we'll take a look at it. We, we did not pursue it because it was anonymous and the locations were almost impossible to find their, their, their issues.
Yeah. And I, I certainly am not recommending we put any priority on it at all. But if we happen to have a crew go by, you may ask them to look and see if, if there's something there, but.
We'll put the, again, I'll get the email back from Nicole and we will take a look. And if it's, if there's one particular location that is obvious, we will take the appropriate action.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't think there was enough even to go by.
Well, you said something about Ridgemont or who, he or she, whoever wrote the letter.
I thought there's one out of the whole page.
I got the impression of you just drove down Ridgemont and you would see all the issues.
Well, fortunately I didn't get anything. So.
Neither Adam. So.
We'll be happy to share.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good.
Here, it says Adam enough.
Yeah. It's a house on Ridgemont. So.
Long street.
Yep.
All right. Bridget?
Well, I just wanted to congratulate again and thank Officer Mordini. I think it's great when we can welcome new members to our police force and especially with our proclamation for police week. I think that always gets to us a little bit. And I think today is also International Firefighters Day. So I wanted to acknowledge that. It's also Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Appreciation Week. So there's a lot of appreciation, as Ron indicated, going on. And I think that our experiences over the last 15 months with COVID have really just highlighted how much we rely on and lean on our public employees. And they have stepped up and beyond my wildest expectations in the city of Urbandale and our nurses and our teachers. And so I just wanted to, and our building safety. I can't forget about that specifically. But just a lot of thanks and appreciation, like Ron said. And then I just, I spent Friday morning listening to most of the presentations with the Iowa Department of Economic Development and just was so impressed with our team with Des Moines and Urbandale and the Bucks and Merle Hay Mall. The feedback that I read from the committee seemed very positive. And I think the jerseys really, really sold it. But no, I, I just honestly, I could not have, I did not, I turned, because I'd spent so much time with the other ones, I turned it off after we were done. So I didn't watch the soccer stadium one. But I was just really, really proud to be part of that project and looking forward to a positive result here this month or next month. And also we had our monthly DART meeting today. We are still waiting on quite a few things to happen at the state house here in the waning days of the session related to, that will definitely impact the DART budget related to Medicaid reimbursement for trips for the pair transit. And then looking at revenue diversification in light of the potential loss of the backfill. And we were also before that looking at revenue diversification. So I get the sense we talked to our lobbyists that they're a little more willing to listen to us because of the potential of getting slammed with the loss of the backfill and the other stuff we're trying to do with diversifying our, our revenue. So I know there's, they're talking to a group of Polk County Republican lawmakers. So like Eddie Andrews, Garrett Gobble, Carter Nordman, trying to get them to really understand kind of what the needs are for us here in the metro. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we won't totally get hurt in that process, but we'll see. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Bridget. Adam?
Just kind of a question AJ, the mayor might know of our found money from COVID, the six-ish million dollars we keep getting emails about from outside vendors willing to help us decide how to spend it. I know rules won't be out from the treasury department for another about six days, but once we get rules, what's kind of our plan of melding that into the nice big budget that we got on our desks too?
Well, again, dependent upon any of the restrictions or allowances by the use of the money, of course, as a non-entitlement city, those dollars, once those rules are set forth, they'll be presented to the state and then the state can also make any adjustments they wish, as I understand. And then we'll get a final, here's what you can spend it on list, if you will. And so much like members of the council, we've had a lot of ideas circulating throughout city hall about where we could spend an additional up to 6.1 million dollars. So I really don't have a definitive answer because we just haven't gotten one yet. Previous dollars that came under the first stimulus plan, we were able to account for those dollars through payroll for our police and fire. Very easy to track from an audit standpoint. This one, again, that's still maybe the same opportunity. It may be the opportunity to make capital purchases. We, we just don't know at this point in time. So I have two staff members who have been tracking it. John Conyer from my office and Nikki Lamb, our finance director. And the last conversation I had with them is that they were still waiting from updates either from the League of Iowa Cities or through any of the federal contacts that we've had. So I'm, I think you can speculate as to a whole host of things that may happen or available for us. We're hoping that we have some significant leeway. You know, if you feel under a very vast and very big umbrella, you might want to think that, you know, anything that would stimulate an economic development type of process, anything that would cover costs associated with COVID. We do, we have already received revenue reimbursement for lost money from the road use tax fund. So that has helped quite a bit. We're also, we believe that there's going to be an ability to capture lost revenue from both recreation and the pool when it wasn't open and any other revenue source that was adversely affected by COVID.
Is there, at this point, do we know if there's a timeline we have to spend the money in? Is it?
That I have not seen anything. I think it can carry over into 2022.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was federal budget cycle year, our budget cycle year, calendar year, which none of those line up together. So.
No. And I've heard, again, one, one report that I read showed anywhere up for up to a two-year window.
Okay.
So again, they don't jive.
So this isn't shovel ready. We have to do it.
This is not shovel ready.
We have a nice paved 100th Street because of that, but.
Well, there, there, again, there may be something out of the transportation programs. There have been new programs announced. Representative Axny's office sent to us that they had two programs. One was essentially in preparation of the reintroduction of, for lack of better words, the entitlement program, not the entitlement, but the earmark programs that used to be known at the federal level. And they're, they're anticipating that the representative's office will have a certain dollar amount to distribute for projects throughout her district. And the other project, and again, the names escaped me, was a really more of the, I would say more of the immediacy. And that was just for 10 projects throughout her entire district. We submitted one project for that, just for 10, and that was for additional funding for the 128th Street project that we're doing at the intersection of Hickman, 128th with the city of Clive for additional federal funds. And that was, we found out that that has been denied. The other project we submitted was for a walkway, pardon me, that would cross over, pedestrian walkway that would cross the interstate I-3580 in the general vicinity of the middle of Plum between 86th and 100th to go across the interstate over to North Park Drive somewhere in the vicinity of Delta Dental. So we'll know more about that project as it moves forward through the federal process.
Okay. Thanks.
Jay, can I ask clarification on something? You said, you said something about a reimbursement for lost revenue for parks and the pool and things like that. Was that be out a different program?
No, that would be in this new, we believe that to be available in this new stimulus program.
Okay.
And that they would look at for municipalities, where you suffered a loss due to COVID, a financial loss, the revenue generation. So for us, it was obviously our recreation programs, the pool revenue that wasn't there. Anything else that was COVID related that we can essentially come back and say, if not for the event of COVID and the pandemic, our revenue stream would have been normal.
Okay.
Had a discussion earlier this evening with Steve Franklin about the comp plan. Steve tells me that you are meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, we're gonna have an update on that.
I've had a conversation with some developers about downtown Urbandale. So they're kind of anxious to see just what we have in mind. There's some pieces that are moving, as you know, down there and a comp plan that would include some sort of direction for a downtown urbanization revitalization. I think it would be pretty timely. The Merle Hay project certainly has stirred some interest and that's a good thing. And so the sooner we can get a comp plan, Steve thought it was going to take about six months is what he thought it would take if we start moving on that. So that puts us at the end of this year before we truly have a comp plan. And until we do, we're going to do like we did tonight with Bentley and the rest of us. We're just going to piecemeal these PUDs. And I would be more than happy to see a comp plan. Cause my understanding is if we had a comp plan, you wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to come in and do an amendment to the current comp plan to piecemeal these PUDs like we're doing, it seems like at every council meeting.
Well, for the one tonight, that was one that if the question was answered by Steve was that, that the, the amendment would probably, the, a new comp plan would have taken place. Staff has already had those conversations. We've met at least three times with that developer who has some interest that was brought to our attention about six weeks ago. And they're putting together ideas. And, and for the downtown area, I know that is a strategic priority of the council. And that was always one of those struggles that we had internally was kind of a chicken and an egg. Do you, do you design something and hope that someone would show up and say, oh, that's nice. I'd like to invest. Or do you have a developer or someone who wants to make the investment coming in and say? say, I'm wanting or willing to do something along these lines? How can we make our plans, the developer's plans, and the city's plans coexist and come together that can meet both the council's and a developer's needs? So it appears that the conversations we're having with this individual developer are going to that direction, that they understand our timeframe, but they also, we've been working through the ideas and kind of in a pre-discussion, if you will, about where they would fit into a comp plan. So some of those may drive part of that discussion. It may be possible to segregate a specific area that could be designated as a downtown area to accelerate that versus the other comp plan, the component of the comp plan.
All right. Adam?
Lot of exciting developments. Appreciate all that. I think one of the reasons people probably get involved at the city council level is for some of the fun things that we got to do today, which is recognize our incredible city staff. So it's a pleasure to get to serve those people every day, and I appreciate it. And exciting developments soon to come. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam. Can't say anything better. I, and I apologize in advance, but reading the public, the Peace Officer Memorial proclamation every year still gets me, but that's, we have a lot of great public employees everywhere, and we do need to recognize them, you know, and especially as Bridget so aptly said, in 15 months or so of COVID, they've been on the front lines every day. So they didn't have the opportunity to take those days off. So thank you for all our public servants who have been out there every day. With that, ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? All right, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.